Alright Chumbas, welcome to Night City Council. Council is in session. I am John John the Wise and I have with me the Mayor of Balance Town himself, James Hut. James, how are you?
I'm doing great. It's good to see you. It's been awhile. We've been busy.
I know man, I missed you. I'm so sorry to all our listeners that we haven't had an up-to-date Night City Council. I know I've been hit up. And I especially need to apologize. Now I gotta check. Yeah, I did it right. Last episode, I swapped our cam placements.
Oh yeah. I forgot you did that.
It caused a rift in the warp and a lot of things happened. People messaged me, including the illustrious Jay Gray to let me know. He's like, "I'm sure you heard this." But you know, and I'm like, "Oh my god dude, I missed it." I edited the whole video and I didn't even catch it.
Wow, wow. What a... Maybe you did this for publicity?
Yeah, exactly. By the way, if you guys see my eyes move over this way, it's because I'm looking at the monitor where James is. If you see me looking like this, I'm looking right into the camera and I'm not looking at James. It's this like really weird production kind of thing going on. I'm not looking this way. Cause what did you say looked like James?
It looked like you were being held hostage or something.
Yeah, it totally does. No, I just can't do this podcast without looking at James's beautiful face. So if I have to be deprived.
The people on the podcast won't even know.
Exactly, true. So for you guys, this is a moot point. You're like, "Who cares? I'm driving in traffic. I don't care if you could see his face or not." But if you see me blinking excessively, then that's your sign that I need help.
So why don't we hop into it? Cause you said we got a lot to do.
Yeah, we have a lot on the docket today. I will see if we can get to questions today, guys, because we have two DLCs to talk about. And more importantly, we gotta talk about why James was gone. Because he was all the way across the world in a little country called Poland. Isn't that right, James?
Alright, we had a great time.
So we'll talk about that momentarily. And then we will be talking about two DLCs today. It is called, the first one is Midnight with the Upload: New Cyberdecks and Hardware. It's obviously a NetRunning-based DLC. It's got some really cool stuff in there. And then the second one is called Must Have Cyberware Deals. Buy now. Do not miss out. Great name for DLC. So we'll be doing that as well. But before we get into that, James, I've been dying to hear, what happened in Poland? What's going on? Tell me what's going on there.
So I can't talk about half of it, okay? I was meeting with CDPR. Whole team flew out. It was awesome. It was good to meet them finally in person. Cause you know, I've been doing this since Covid. Haven't gotten to get a face-to-face. So that was great. And I mean, of course, their campus is fantastic and awesome and amazing. And I also can't talk about anything that I did there. So let's move on and talk about the second part, which is PierCon. I went to PierCon. This massive convention in Poland. And it was very big. I was not ready for how big it was going to be. It was easily bigger than any of the American conventions I've been to.
Wow, really? Bigger than Gen Con even?
Here's the funny part. I've never been to Gen Con. I'm going in about 28 days from when this is getting filmed. And that's because the first year I was on at Tel-Sorin, I didn't, I stayed back to finish Cyberpunk Red. The next two years, we both, we didn't go either. Because of, you know, the thing.
Obviously, because of the thing.
The third, horrible movie monster. So this is the final year where I'm actually going, you know, in the great chain of reasons I don't have to go to Gen Con. I've kind of missed Gen Con three years running and I'm back at it. So it was definitely bigger than any of the PAXs I've been to.
Okay, well PAX is pretty big. So if it's bigger than PAX.
It was wild. It was wild. And a whole lot of people cosplaying, a lot of people cosplaying Witcher, a lot of people cosplaying Cyberpunk. It was awesome. Got to play with some people. But mostly, you know, we're there to figure it out, you know, by guess.
Was it more work-related?
What?
Was it more work-related?
It was, it was work-related for Mike, who was booked up left, right, and center and you know, had a security detail on him the whole time. He had like a hand hold him the whole time. Cause he would just get stopped every five seconds. But luckily, nobody knows who I am. So nobody could hold me hostage.
Yeah, yeah. That's, you have the anonymity of being a genius behind closed doors. That's great.
So you know, it was fun.
At least you know the people that do know you are hardcore. Cause they really love you. So tell me about the games. Tell me about the games you run.
So I ran some games of Cyberpunk. I was demo, I was trying out the new, you said we only have two DLCs. Technically, we kind of have three. You forgot about the easy mode.
Oh yeah. It came out on Free RPG Day, which I realize I'll never be able to celebrate because it's on my wife's birthday. So.
Oh yeah, yeah, no, you're after.
There's no chance. That's.
There's no chance. No chance for you.
Yeah, my local shop.
Hey, you wanna go to the game store?
She's like, "I'll kill you. Alright, you're gonna die tonight." But my local shop.
Myself, divorce.
Yeah, my local shop was able to give away copies. Unfortunately, they only got two copies for the shop for Free RPG Day. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they were supposed to get more. I don't know if it was a supplier thing, but they only got two. And I gotta say, whoops, sorry about that. I gotta say, I've been.
One of the places.
Yeah, and I get it, you know, we're living in the time of the great plague. So all kinds of stuff happens with shipping and stuff like that. But I gotta say, there's like a cultivating Cyberpunk Red community happening nearby. Cause one of the guys, well, two of the guys that play in my Under the Crimson Sky game, which is my actual plaything, they own the shop that I'm talking about. So they got a taste of Cyberpunk through my game. And then now they're thinking of running it. Now they're like talking about it. They watch my videos and like, it's happening. You know what I mean? So this might be a little hotspot area for Cyberpunk.
That's great to hear. That's great to hear, of course. I did want to mention really quick before we get too far with the subject that we are going to be releasing that once, once we can, contractually. And so that'll, that'll become more widely available. There's an adventure in it that I wrote. And I really like it because it concerns dirty cops and classic very cyberpunk stories. And it's also very short. Although despite it being very short, I've actually never finished it during a demo. Because you know, they're like, "Oh, we only have an hour." And I'm like.
Yeah, that's not enough.
And I gotta teach the rules? It's like an hour and a half, hour, two hours maybe, depending on how much role-playing is there. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't care if it goes to two hours if you're role-playing. You know what it means?
Yeah, exactly. Why would you wanna, why would you wanna stifle role-playing?
Exactly, exactly.
Why should I look at the book?
As a role-playing self.
Well, I actually took, got a look at that book because went by the shop. I wanted to check it out. And I was thinking to myself like, "Man, there's a lot in here. I'm trying to figure out what's missing." You know what I mean? I think like NetRunning might have been not there.
That's a good point. It's like 50 pages. Normally, when people give out free stuff, it's like 15. This is, this is a 50-page, definitely how to play.
It even has a battle map in there and it has pre-generated characters at the end of the book. So like literally, you just need this one 50-page book and like five to six people can just play Cyberpunk. Boom, right then and there. And that's exactly what they did on Free RPG Day. They ran some Cyberpunk games.
If you wiggle out the staples, you can remove the battle map. And it's a two-sided battle map.
Yeah, it's great.
We were really happy about getting that done. We tried very hard to be like, "Uh, so when you put the pages in the PDF, is it gonna, how's it gonna work?" Anyway.
Yeah, you guys continue to make sure that Cyberpunk Red gets in people's hands and people can play it easily. That's what I love about it.
Anyway, so that will be made available. I don't know when. But soon. Mark my words.
Alright, they are marked. What's the date?
Alright.
7/11.
Something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, I don't remember.
It's too long ago.
Anyway, so that, that was Poland. It was great. I bought a, I bought a sick jacket.
Nice.
Do I see it?
Yeah, of course. Go get the jacket. And then tell me about any other games you played other than Cyberpunk, if you did. Ladies and gentlemen, for the podcast listeners, James has gotten up from his seat. He is rummaging through items in the background. And he has come and produced a jacket. It is a leather jacket with a great yellowish-green phoenix on the back. That's like in flames. It's a sleeveless leather jacket with a chain. I mean, this thing is straight out of Night City. That's so cool. It has shoulder pads?
Tire bits on the shoulder pads and stuff.
Yeah. Wait, was that, was that at the convention? Somebody made that stuff?
Yeah, yeah, I got it at the convention. I tell you, if you're ever going to, PierCon is worth a trip, man.
Well, yeah, if I'm ever in Poland around that time, I'll try to go.
If you're in Poland around that time, you pick it up. It's good stuff. And you know, the Zelote is like a fourth of a dollar.
That goes a long way, huh?
You feel like a rich man.
That's fun, dude. That's good.
Anyway.
Yeah, I'm glad you came back in one piece and you had a good time. You met some cool people. I'm sure you guys had some cool conversations at CDPR. Maybe a little bit of business, a little bit of pleasure.
Business and pleasure are mixed, yeah.
Yeah. I'm excited. I'm excited to hear about that.
Didn't really get to play many games. I kind of just went to the play area and said, "I'd like you to schedule me as many games of Cyberpunk Red as you can possibly manage. I'm here for three days." And they worked it out.
Man, you're a workhorse, dude. That's great.
Well, it was great. It was great. Plus, you know, you don't get the, you don't get that experience of playing with people who are from another country very often.
That's good, man. Was there any language barrier issues with any of the players or?
Yes, but you know, it's only a barrier until you climb over it, right?
Roger. Yeah, I like that.
Anyway.
That's good. That's good. That's good. I'm glad you came back and all that. Before we get into the DLCs, let's talk about Tales from the Red, right? That's what it's called, Tales from the Red?
Yep.
It's a new book that will, that you guys are in development. You guys have teased it a little bit. It's supposed to be a mission pack of books and it's gonna be coming out very soon. And coincidentally, I almost called Under the Crimson Sky Tales from the Red. And I'm glad I didn't do that because that would have been very confusing.
Good idea. Good idea.
So tell me what you can tell me about it.
So I've written some adventures in it. Well, I've worked on some of the adventures in them. And the first adventure in the book is, is one that I worked on. I'm really excited because I got to like rework the, the sort of stylings and personification of my favorite gangs, the Philharmonic Vampires.
Oh, nice.
There's an adventure in there that we'll get to do that. There's also, you get to hang out with a band. And what else? You get to be on a movie set in one of the adventures. It's a very, it's a very varied vision underwater adventure.
We all hate underwater levels.
No, no, no. It's fun. It's very fun.
I know, I'm just joking.
It's nothing, it's nothing like the Temple of.
It's not like Donkey Kong.
It's not the Water Temple from, from Link to the Past. It's not the Water. Anyway, it's a, it's an adventure book. We're very excited about it. And I know that it's fun and that it's enjoyable, but I'm really looking forward to everybody else learning that too.
Is it in the same vein of the data pack? The data pack adventures? Ooh, okay.
Full chunky adventures, 20-plus page adventures, fully illustrated, full color.
Wow, that's, that's like.
This is more like Book of Tales on the Witcher side, but a little bit longer.
So each one of these, I believe it's, is it 16 adventures? Is that what it said?
No, no.
Much less. That's what I figured. I don't know where I got the 16 number from.
I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't wanna get it wrong.
Nine.
I think.
Gotcha. Okay.
Get that wrong and I can't look it up with my phone being used to call John John.
Well, no, I love the way that you're saying that it's not like the data pack where it's more in-depth. There's, I'm guessing.
Like Book of Tales.
Yeah, perfect.
For Witcher fans.
That's exciting, man. Is there gonna be any of those tables that we usually get? The 20 Things in Night City, 20 this, that?
No, it, it really is just, it's, it's a big book and it's just adventure. So that you, young, you can have, what is it? A couple of weeks off from preparing as a GM. I think it's great. And it gets you to like, these are not stories that you would have come up with yourself. You know what I mean? These are, these are in-depth, like stories about the time of the Red. And they're very specific. That's why I like it.
Yeah, okay, cool. I'm excited, man. Like genuinely, I'm really excited about that because that's like exactly what we're looking for at my local shop. And I'm sure there's a bunch of groups out there. That's like one of the biggest messages I've gotten from people is while they appreciate one-page plot hooks and even the data pack.
This is for the people. And tell you what, you play through this whole book, I'd be amazed if you played through this whole book and you don't kind of learn how to do it yourself. You know what I mean? Playing these adventures is gonna teach you how to run your own. It's gonna teach you how to not need the one-page.
Gotcha. Okay, do we have a?
Even though I don't need them. Because for me, it reminds me of work. And now it's like, "Oh, I get to run a pre-generated adventure? Ah, great. I don't have to worry about anything."
Yeah, that's the, I get it. A lot of people are busy. They just wanna be able, like having pre-gens, having adventures that you could just be like plug and play. Let's just play right here, right now. I love that. Especially with that Cyberpunk Red app.
And I write it in the, and I wrote it in the introduction for this book, The Tales of the Red. We did lay them out so that if you play the first one, then the second one, then the third one, and the fourth one, just in order. That's in my opinion, the best experience for, in terms of like, cause you don't wanna eat like all the rice first in a meal and then eat all the meat and then eat all the vegetables. You wanna, you know, like buy the salad, enjoy some rice, enjoy some meat. You wanna enjoy it like the bento box it is, bit by bit, in the right order. And we put it in a, in a very curated order. So if you're wondering, "Why aren't these things in alphabetical order?" That's the reason.
Yeah, they're all, they're connected in some sort of way. That's great. I love it. Alright.
But, but they, they've got a flow. They've got a standard difficulty curve flow, in terms of intensity.
So, so the missions might not be connected as far as the plots, but the style of the missions are variety, basically.
Yeah, it's a variety. So you won't run into like two things that are, you won't run into big gunfights back-to-back or like, "I'll do this adventure, then I'll do that adventure." Boy, if you did that, you wouldn't have any combat for six weeks. You know what I mean?
Yeah, totally. Nice, man. I'm excited about that. Any ETA on when we're gonna have it in our hands?
Okay, that's all in the pub, that's in the printing. That is in the vein of printing and shipping. And I have no power.
I understand.
I cannot control the, cannot make the trains run on time.
No, not with that attitude.
Get the train generator out.
The conductor's like, "I just work here, man." Alright, well, why don't we get into some juicy DLCs then? Let's start with the first one. Midnight with the Upload: New Cyberdecks and Hardware. I know that you don't have it up with on hand because like you said, you're using the device that would look it up. So I'm, I'm gonna help you out here.
Knowledge, of course.
Of course. So why don't you give us an idea about what this DLC is, what its intention was? And then we'll get more into it.
So I like doing these item DLCs, right? I wanna try to find, you know, cause I tend to do DLC in cycles. You know, a bunch of connected DLC. And Midnight with the Upload is really designed to put more tools in the hands of NetRunners. Just like, it's part of the Fixer line of DLCs, which is where we center, we center on a Fixer and they've got some items. The next one we're talking about is in the same line. And I've been enjoying doing it. Because, oh, can stream live for us? I've been enjoying doing it because I get to, you know, come with a cool character or move forward a character from lore. And and give a little bit of a fiction piece in the front, but then I get to just focus on the items and focus on getting items that are gonna make people have a different game experience. Whether it's the GM using them as a, in an adversarial way, or the players using them in their own way. And this one is to, so Woodshipper was about, "Hey, we need more heavy weapons." Heavy weapons is where I love. NetRunning is about, NetRunners need more stuff. Specific NetRunner stuff. And this one, so this one's about more stuff for NetRunners. The Upload is this awful dude you don't wanna hang out with. Who is, who is just kind of wrong and slightly evil and amoral. And it's, it's good to have characters that aren't, you know, as fun and I wanna have a beer with as Woodshipper. This is more of the, this is more of in the like showing that, "Hey, there's a bunch of different kinds of people and they're not all heroes or villains." Some of them are just gross.
Yeah, some of them are just evil people.
That's just, that's just the upload. The upload is just a gross evil person. And that's okay. I, I think everybody, if you've got a NetRunner in group, this is mandatory reading. You know, you, you gotta, you gotta get the stuff because it's gonna give them more customization options. It was really important to put this in a DLC and not in like Black Chrome, for example, because this way, this could be free. And we could get it into more hands theoretically and move it to the people who needed it. I have a feeling that NetRunners are the type of players that are going to look up more things about their class on the internet. Unless they'll find it. You know, the guns, you know, people disperse the guns themselves. They're out. Guns have their own legs, you know, they'll find a way. But for net, for this one, it was important that NetRunners knew that they were lost.
Yeah, it's also, it's great for game masters that wanna have variety of like loot and variety of equipment to give NPCs as well. So just to give you guys an idea.
You could build some NPC-focused Cyberdecks in here. Not just Cyberdecks for breaking ice, but Cyberdecks designed for defending ice.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of stuff here that I'm like, "Oh yeah, this is something an NPC would have and not a player." You know what I mean? A player has to be versatile. A player has to have all kinds of programs and things going on for different situations. But some NPCs are specialized and focused in one thing. And that's where some of these Cyberdecks would help them with that. I did wanna quickly, before I ask you a question about one of them. What you're gonna get in this DLC is new Cyberdecks. It's about two pages of that. And then it's about two pages, two and a half of new hardware. Hardware are upgrades that you install into your Cyberdeck that give them special abilities and stuff like that. So it's, it's a lot of stuff, a lot. I wanted to bring your attention to one that I did have some questions about. Some other people hit me up about it. It's called the SGI Technologies Curbros. It's a thousand eddies, very expensive. Raw power in Cyberdeck form. Drag your enemies down to hell. It's a Cyberdeck with six slots that can only install programs and five slots that can only install hardware. Excuse me. Only Hellhound Black Ice can be installed in the Cyberdeck's program slots. So what's the, tell me about the limitation of only having Hellhounds. Like what's the, what's the idea of that?
So there's a, this is, this item is about multiple things. I should have mentioned this earlier. Thank you for reminding me. This is two weeks, two months. It's been months since I wrote this. And so first off, Curbros, Cerberus. Three Hellhounds. You know, three-headed, three-headed dog.
Yep.
That's, that's my three-headed dog.
Yeah, I believe a Greek mythology in the river, in the underworld or whatever.
Yeah, guard the gate to hell, you know.
Some, yeah, yeah.
Player monster for drops primes. Anyway. The point being, so it's three Hellhounds. If all you get to use are Hellhounds, you can run this deck. It's meant to be basically an anti-person deck, not an anti-program deck because you're running, you're running a, you're running a strictly anti-person Black Ice, a very powerful anti-person Black Ice. And you're running three of them most likely, or you have empty slots in your deck. And the five, the fun comes in the five hardware slots. You can sort of put in whatever you're feeling that day.
No, you keep saying three Hellhounds, but it says here.
Six slots.
Five slots. Or sorry, six slots can only install programs. They each take two? Is that what it is?
Each of the Black Ice take two slots in your Cyberdeck. So this is, what you're meant to install here is three dogs. And it's named after a three-headed dog. And it's, it's meant to be a flavor, very powerful, flavorful deck.
Yeah, so let's say you're in a net architecture. You, there's a demon in there. The demon sets off an alarm and says, "Boom, boom, there's a Netrunner in here." The Netrunner that's on the third floor goes, "Oh, whoops, I gotta get over there and make sure I take care of business." He has his Curbros on hand, finds you. You're like at, you're fighting an Asp and then this guy appears with three Hellhounds. Is that the idea of it?
Yeah. You're supposed to, it's a deck meant for killing people. Like there are multifunctional decks, like decks used for, "Oh, I wanna defeat this net architecture." Some of what the Upload talks about is sort of the, the meta, if you will, of these people who essentially hack. And while hacking, you can kill someone. There would be this specific way they talk about doing that. I mean, it's, it's, I hate to say you die in the game, you die in real life, but that's how these people are living. The Upload is, is a very like, it's either you or them type thing. And the, my point being, what were the questions you got about this deck? I'm confused.
The questions I got were basically on a player-focused level. Why would a player take a deck like this that has that kind of limitation? And just wanted to know what the design was behind having a deck. And uh, just wanted to know what the design was behind having a deck that was limited just to Black Eye or uh Hellhounds.
Um, well, you can use Hellhounds aggressively um to fight other net runners. Um, one thing you can do is uh, is you can safe jack out with an action. And then you can just, you know, out the other one in your backpack and plug it in. Basically go pull one of these, like where you log out and you log in. Look, have you ever played an MMO where you were fighting a, a guy and somebody, you're, you're, you're lo- you're leveling a lower leveled alternative character? And um, this guy logs, this guy logs in, he tries to kill you, and he's way higher level than you. So you log out and then you log in to a higher level character to fight him.
Yeah, you come back, you're like, alright, man, this guy's killing me in the leveling area, so let me come back and teach him a lesson.
Exactly, exactly. Um, and that's always fun. Um, it'd be, very realistically, people would have decks with different functions. The reason why you have this thing um is specifically for killing people. Um, you've got a lot of slots, uh, but they can only do one thing. Um, between six and five, um, you've got eleven slots in your deck. Uh, and this deck is uh, is very good at this one thing, and you're not really using it for other stuff. Um. I think that uh, net running is really expensive as a player upfront, right? If they start and they feel the weight of this first purchase, this five hundred dollar purchase. Um, but very quickly, as the game moves on to like a mid-tier of money. The netrunner might run out of stuff to buy. Right? You know, like I already got my, I already got my big cyber, I already got the big cyber deck, right? And I could put as many slots as I want. So I guess I'll buy a specialty machine, and I'll buy another one, and I'll make the one, this one have this in it instead of that. It's a, it's a side deck.
Got you, yeah. Yeah, and with how small uh cyber decks are, they're like, they fit in the palm of your hand, right? You can just have them in your pocket.
For sure. Uh. I do think that getting three Hellhounds activated on you in one turn is uh, i- is, is a bit of a reason to buy the deck.
Yeah, it's devastating, to be honest. Uh, I, I love the idea of calling them dog handlers.
Log out.
Yeah, log out right away.
Hi, I'm here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you from doing what you're doing. Like, die.
Yeah, I mean, if you know that you want some kind of response, like that's why I said earlier, I think NPCs specializing in this kinda thing, I can totally see a company going like, we have really important data in this net architecture. So we're gonna hire dog handlers. And we're gonna equip them with SGI Technologies new Curbos. Because it's designed specifically for this, we got a contract with them for this. And there, they come loaded up with the Hellhounds already. And we just open up a box, there's a bunch of them in there, we give them to our net runners, they go into the net architecture and they patrol it. And that's basically how it would work. For a player, it's, it's like you said, it's a side deck, it's something to have on the side to use uh where, where you'll have another deck that has all your shields and your speedy Gonzales and all those other things. And then you have this other deck when a netrunner shows up, and you're like, oh man, I didn't know there was gonna be a netrunner in here. Let me log out, get my netrunner killing duck, and come back in.
And they might not even be there when you come back in.
Yeah, that's, they might log out.
They might be like, eh, let's see how long it takes them.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, sounds good. Uh, let's talk about a piece of hardware then. Um, just to round it out, how about the perfume shop?
Oh, that. This one is definitely for NPCs.
Okay.
Uh, that, if you, if you're running a perfume shop and you're a player, you're, you're extreme different kind of role player. Um, perfume shop is uh, is, is a way to be able to run a lot of the um.
Skunk.
The, the skunk. Um.
Yeah.
It's just sort of like the idea that I, I would imagine that there are some companies that wouldn't want to kill the people hacking them. Um, but would like to dissuade them.
Yeah.
If you had powerful Black Ice just loaded in um this, and you had a um, a, a sysadmin that used this, it would become quite difficult to get all these skunks off you. Um, and then, you know, it becomes, oh, you wanna fight all these Black Ice in a row uh for uh, you know, for. Um, without sliding, essentially, with the skunk. Any skunks, you either deal with the skunks slowly, it gives them a warning step. Um, and a middle, a middle option, I think, maybe, um, or it's funny, maybe it's just funny.
Well, just to give the listeners a heads up, it's a cyberdeck hardware. While installed, skunk Black Ice programs take up one slot in your deck instead of two. And this takes two hardware option slots. So remember, programs and hardware are two separate slots on your cyber deck. It's gonna take two of the hardware, and then all your program slots can be filled with one skunk each. And as James said, while that not, that's not gonna kill your netrunner. It's definitely gonna disable whatever plans that they had, because it's something that they'll have to deal with and they might not be able to. When six skunks hop onto them a- and ruin their time, right?
I don't think there would be a, okay, maybe you're the guy with six skunks in your deck. And your whole problem is to log on, you probably have a silly hat that you wear while doing. Exactly, you probably have like a um, a raccoon skin cap. Um, and uh, you wear that while doing your job, but uh. Uh, I think it really, it's, it's, it's treasure, it adds options. And um, the important part of net running is you get to make it your own. So uh, if you, maybe if you've got a uh, a net architecture to um, to defend. This would be an option for capture rather than kill. Um, or at least stop them from hacking it. Uh.
Yeah. Let's talk about another, another one that's exciting that I think is pretty cool. It's called Swamp Mist. It's a cyberdeck hardware, while installed, Wisp Black Ice installed on your cyberdeck deal two D six damage instead of one D six. However, while installed, no Black Ice other than Wisp can be installed on your cyberdeck, it takes two slots. So it's a way to boost up your Wisp programs.
I like that one cuz it gives more options for using the um, using uh. Black Ice that um, that maybe you wanted to use, but they weren't good enough, quote unquote. Um, this gives you options to specialize. Um, there are a couple of these hardwares in it, it's not just like three, there's like ten, right?
Yeah, there's a bunch.
Um, so uh. Maybe the takeaway from this is, hey, there are a lot more toys to go play with.
Eleven, by the way.
Eleven, well, yeah, that extra one, that was free. Um, in fact, they're all free.
Exactly. Did we mention that? The DLCs are free?
Yeah, they're all free, for sure. Ah, um, I'm glad you like.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's fun, it's interesting, it's actually, there's a lot of narrative focus on this too. Like you gotta think to yourself, somebody who buys a Swamp Mist paid for a bunch of Wisps. And Wisps are cheaper than uh Hellhounds, I believe, right? So it's like you, you, your budget, it's like your budget cyber deck, uh, anti-personnel cyber deck. And then you buy this like little upgrade and boom.
Also have another effect on them, not just damage though.
Oh yeah, uh, I don't remember off top of my head.
I believe they have the Rizbolt effect.
Oh, wait, minus one.
Um, you're, you're looking to, you're looking to um lower the amount of net actions, don't, don't pull out here, don't pull out here. Don't pull out the tome.
Everything's gonna fall over. That tome is holding everything in place. It's like the cornerstone of my books, it's keeping everything in place.
Yeah, I'm glad it's useful.
Yeah.
But yeah, um, that's, that's um, that one. If you're a netrunner, go, go get it. If you're a GM with a net, tell them about it.
And then also you, you're gonna wanna purchase, damn it, where are the cards? Alright, well, I can't, I don't have the cards on hand.
Netrunning cards too.
Oh, wait, I have them. They're in here. Just like you got your jacket, I'm gonna get my cards. Cards right here, baby. I got my cards, and I actually, I, I separated these cards in a fun way. I made like a easy deck and a, and a difficult deck. In the easy deck, there are like the weaker programs. Uh, and then the hardcore deck is like the liches and the giants and the dragons. So like I might throw in like one, I'll, I'll, I'll take from those decks and like make one deck for the encounter. And I'll be like, alright, I hope I don't pull the dragon. It's like boom, second floor dragon, like, oh man, it could have been an Asp.
Could have been an Asp. I, I know players that have been like, at least it wasn't an Asp. Thing, Asp, Asp is uh, is fifty dollars down.
Yep.
Close up a fifty dollar.
Yeah, wonderful art. If you guys like uh the Under the Crimson Sky art, it's made from the same uh artist, so support. Now I can't close this, and it's driving me crazy. Alright, so there's that, let's move on to the next DLC, how about that, James?
Yeah, that sounds good, keep it rolling.
Let's do the next one, the next one, must-have cyberware deals, buy now, do not miss out. I love the artwork here by Shenfei. It's a chumba with purple mohawk in their bed, looking on their phone because they just can't go to sleep.
Who hasn't been looking at their phone because they can't go to sleep? It's extremely relatable.
The deals are so good, how can you pass it up?
Get to see his terrible apartment in the back, you know, it's like, there's like something metal coming out of the wall and.
But his phone is top notch, then that, you know what, that's like consistent with, like I've been some messed up parts of the world. And uh, I noticed that even the poorest people have cell phones.
No, for real, um, I mean, you don't live in your apartment, you live in your phone.
Yeah, exactly, so.
When you're apart, you're in your apartment unless you're on your phone.
So tell me, James, what is the intention of this DLC?
Oh, this is fun, this is dumb, stupid fun. Uh, this is a bunch of fun, this is the first time we're doing like DLC cyberware. And I wanted to nod to all of the, the fun stuff that we used to get in these Chromebooks back in twenty twenty. Um, well, it, in twenty, the, the edition twenty twenty. Uh. Uh. The, the fun goofy stuff is, was one of the first reasons I fell in love with cyberpunk, and this was about making more of that. Um, Jay Gray.
I think, this is a Jay Gray pr- production?
No, 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 um, he helped a lot.
Oh, okay, cool.
And uh, I'll be, we brainstorm these ideas together and then I, I root it out.
Yeah, Jay is so valuable.
No concepts, so gotta, gotta put respect in that direction.
By the way, uh, we should have mentioned this, but both of you guys got promoted, right?
That's true, we did get promotions.
So tell people about this, what does this mean?
So um, I made a senior game designer um at Arkal, so I'm helping them run the design department. So theoretically, when we get more people, I'll be uh, helping them uh figure out how to design for us. Um, we're uh, we're looking at, you know, hiring and find some more writers. Uh, so it was a step toward that direction and uh, you know, but my job really hasn't changed. Uh, I just got a different title, um, I've been kind of doing a lot of work, so I'm still doing a lot of work.
Hell yeah, and we, we're grateful for all of your hard work.
It's the type of thing, I, I don't know if anyone listening is in their, is in their thirties, but it's nice to um, be able to, ju- if, even if you're getting a change in title to reflect the work you're actually doing. Uh, it's, it's great because it lets me network with people um in my area that are in more corporate environments. And they know, oh, this person's a higher up on the totem pole, oh, oh, this was that. Um, it, it sounds great, and I'm very happy to get it, but at the end of the day. My job is still making awesome cyberpunk amateur stuff, and it, that was the same thing the day before I got promoted.
Business as usual.
Business as usual, I'm still doing the same stuff too. It's not like I'm all made something now, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm very much still in the weeds, doing all the design.
Well, hey, congratulations to both of you, um, I'm excited to see what the future holds with that, and I'm happy to see you guys getting promoted. And then, should we get back to the DLC?
Let's get back to the DLC, less, less on that.
Okay, so let's talk about some of these fun things. Uh, first page, the first thing I see is a cyber pillow now.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta tell me what the hell is a cyber pillow?
Oh, is a, I, I forgot to mention it in the um, in the Midnight with the Upload DLC that we just went over. A lot of Midnight with the Upload is about bringing forward concepts from Brainware Blowout, which was a book in the twenty twenty edition. Uh, and uh, I'd be very, very amazed if you had Brainware Blowout.
Of course I have Brainware Blowout, are you kidding me? It's one of my favorite books. Raish Bartmoss's Brainware Blowout, right here, baby.
Uh, so um, midnight here, so you've unlocked extra trivia by owning Brainware Blowout, John John. Um.
Yeah, but I don't have uh Raish Bartmoss's Guide to the Net, which I do need to get.
The eyes on the Brainware Blowout uh robot on the front are the same eyes from the Midnight with the Upload.
Oh shit, you're right. Oh my god, I didn't even realize that. It's on the side of the eyes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Secret, there's your secret um John John Show listener uh tidbit trivia today. I did that specifically to call back to it.
Dude, that's great, this is, uh, I'm definitely gonna cover this in one of my live chats. I started doing like where I take books and I do like in-depth chats with, with like, you know, live chat. Because it has this really cool section for writing your own programs.
Yeah, I know. Is a uh, is a program in that book. I know um Warlock's book.
Right there. It's a chart, you, you, you add your intelligence and your interface, and you can roll some programs.
You're in the wrong edition, put that away.
I'm just saying.
Um. Uh, there uh, I, you know, Green Knight is referential to, uh Verdant Knight is referential to Green Knight in that book. There's a Warlock's book, uh, which is about Wizards book. Uh, program in there, uh, and uh, there's a, there's a bunch of, bunch of callbacks and calls forward. Um, to twenty seventy seven, actually, in some of the cyber decks. Uh, anyway, um, we're on.
Cyber pillow.
We're talking about a cyber pillow. Um, cyber pillow is, I think, from Solo Fortune, it might be from Chromebook two. Um, but we brought back a lot of the dumb stuff from the Chromes. Um, the kill counter, the like arm, where you, you press it, you press it and the kill counter goes up.
Yep.
Um, that's from the Chromes, uh, Leeds, turn on, show off nails. Are uh referenced to two products um by that company, uh, they just put them together. Uh.
Yeah, well, for those of you guys that are curious, a cyber pillow is a cyber arm upgrade. Uh, and basically, eh, well, i- i- it turns your arm into a pillow, and you could sleep on your arm. You know how you like cuddle your arm under the pillow when you go to sleep? You just literally sleep on your arm and it's a pillow. So you know, sleeping on the streets isn't that bad in Night City if you got a cyber pillow.
Uh, it doesn't actually change any of that, it just um, the rules text states that it makes it a little bit easier to fall asleep.
A little bit, yeah, no benefit other than making it easier to take a nap wherever you want.
Yeah, I, I feel like, and uh, that was kind of what it was in the previous, it, this game. It falls into the um shower in a can. Um, with some items. Uh, just cool stuff that adds to the flavor, because not everyone with cyberware in this era is like, I'm gonna get another gun in my arm. Um, a lot of people are just going to their job.
Yeah, 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 they're not like, they're not edge runners.
They're not edge runners, exactly.
Yeah.
Um, it's, adds a lot of world flavor here, I like. Um, of course, we have uh William Maze, Mr. Amazing. Uh, Mr. Amaze, I believe.
Mr. Amaze's new cyberware, buy them all.
You wanna, you wanna, you wanna act that, voice act that out for the audience, it's not that long.
Mr. Amaze.
I timed that so that it was exactly in thirty seconds. You can say that whole thing very. I timed that so that it was exactly in thirty seconds, you can say that whole thing very fast in thirty seconds.
Mr. Amaze's new cyberware, buy them all, is that, that's way less than thirty seconds.
No, no, the, the fiction piece in the front.
Oh, I was reading this tagline at the end. Oh, yeah, 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 that, there's a whole like fictional thing, Mr. Amaze is here with an unskippable ad to let you know what's hot this week, that's why it's thirty seconds, cuz it's an unskippable ad, got it? Got it, that's cool, I like that.
Buy this ad, um, why won't you just come down to Dock thirteen?
Is Dock, what's going on in Dock thirteen?
That's where it's, dude, you gotta read the fiction.
I did, I, I, I gotta do a show first. Yeah, it says, uh, the House of Maze, Dock thirteen in sunny south Night City to get you hooked up. We've cracked a brand new cargo container, premium cyberware that will get you so chromed up, you'll walk, talk and dance into uncoming traffic as a brilliant, beautiful new you. We've got chromed out tongues, yes, crates full of tongues, uh, Neo, new tongues. Made of premium, high quality, top of the line surgical grade stainless steel, your mouth will never feel the same without one. Already got one? Well, we'll make you a great, anyway, I stumbled on my words, but I tried my best.
Great gifts, but.
That's why ads don't work.
I got you a new tongue.
Yeah, why don't we talk about the new tongue, new tongue, whoops.
I like new tongue.
New tongue, it says here, everyone should have one of these. Add your own virtual real bacon for free with all the taste and none of the fat. Every nugget of broccoli kibble you can taste like it's been broiled in butter, deep fried and heavily salted. Don't know what butter actually tastes like? Now you will. Cybernetic tongue alters the user's sense of taste, used, using a link agent, virtual seasoning can be added to food. So basically, you can be eating kibble all day and it tastes like uh, Kobe beef.
See you. I'll leave that to the imagination, cuz with this, the Matrix is telling me that this steak is juicy. But needless to say, that this is not as good as you might expect it to be, the experience of virtual bacon is not the same as the experience of real bacon.
No, of course not.
This is an interesting um, midpoint between the uh, the fantasy of complete artificiality. Uh, and um, artificial like food.
Yeah, it's like, it's like strawberry flavored candy and then an actual strawberry, you know? Totally different, but like you said, if you've never tasted bacon, tasted bacon before, you'll be like, oh, I guess this is what bacon tastes like.
Right, exactly, um, I think most telling um, is the feature to completely turn off your sense of taste.
Oh yeah, that's, that's really important, especially cuz some, some drugs don't taste good, you know, but anyway.
Yeah, um, why would you buy this? I don't know why you're gonna, why you buy this, but you might have a cool NPC with it. Uh, it, maybe it's story world.
Style over substance, James, that's why you buy it, alright?
Of course, um, there's a bunch of uh, interesting um, body um, sense uh, bits in here. Um, I want you to uh, to look at one of the, I get your, I wanna get your opinion, John John.
Okay.
Um, there's one that requires bio monitor in there, which one is that?
Requires bio monitor, let's see here, uh, I'm just reading the options. Um, we got mood eye, new tongue, heal display, hold projector prom. Hollow projector palm, uh, external vo- vid screen.
Mm-hmm.
None of these?
No, 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 it requires a, it's appetite suppressor, it'd be an A.
Appetite suppressor, gotcha, oh, appetite controller is the first one. Alright, it's five hundred eddies, you need a hospital, humanity loss of seven or two D six. Uh, I'm guessing seven at character creation, two D six during the campaign, right? Uh, people ask me how I stay this thin with all the lunch meetings I take, this is my secret and it can be yours too. Internal body cyberware allows the user to manage and ignore hunger at the touch of a button using their bio monitor. This allows the user to ignore humanity loss from the long-term environmental stress factor. See the core rulebook, page two thirty-one, associated with it. Starvation is still an issue, after seven days without the food, the user must roll a death save at the start of each day. With a cumulative plus one to the roll for each additional day, requires a bio monitor.
Special for this, that's just the normal starvation roll.
Okay, so now I gotta look it up, two thirty-one, now I gotta get the tome and hopefully things don't fall apart. Here we go, two thirty-one. Two thirty-one, so you can, you can ignore this effect basically, right?
Um, well, it, it lets you ignore. Right, right.
Yeah, uh, okay, you said it's long-term environmental stress factors, right? That's what it is. Starvation or being trapped in a war zone, experiencing devastation from a long-term disaster or living in constant danger for a month. You take two D six humanity loss, so if you are starving yourself, you will take humanity loss. Um, so you know, if you don't wanna go cyber psycho, you gotta get something to eat, or you can get the appetite controller and then do a death save.
Uh, yeah, I mean, well, you you still get, starvation doesn't mean eating no food, it means eating not enough food.
Not enough calories in.
You can definitely not take the death save and still have this prevent humanity loss from starvation. Um, you know, you, you, yes, you too can live just enough to not die, um, less painlessly.
I love the narrative idea of like a modeling agency that forces the models to take this. And that can be like a whole campaign, where like you're going and trying to uncover this, this corporation that's doing this and try to save the people within it, um, just because of this one piece of cyberware. So I like it, it's fun.
Yeah, um, so what I wanna get your opinion on this is because there's more things sort of like this in this vein of controlling the internals of the body and whatnot that are coming in Black Chrome.
Hmm.
Uh, and uh, I think they're gonna form this nice cycle of this cool character kind idea that you can come up with.
Hmm, uh, there is pain editors too, so we got pain editors, we got appetite controller. What else is there out there right now currently?
Elf, um, the key I want people to look out for is requires bio monitor. Things that require the bio monitor are typically the stuff that um, there are certain, the certain brand of um, you know, stuff you see out today as wearables, right? Um, they're the next stage in that idea, hey, what if I knew exactly how many nutrients I've eaten today? What if I knew this, that and the other thing? Um, it's a, it's a very, it's an interesting cyberpunk concept that uh, I think we can uniquely explore in a TRPG versus a movie or a video game. Um, the movie can say, hey, look at these people starving, the video game can say, look at these people starving. On with the story, uh, but in a TRPG, you can kind of mechanically move forward the concept that you might be starving. And here's why.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh, there is a, I don't know, I, I think it's cool. Uh, and uh, I, I think it's very cyberpunk, I'm excited.
Yeah, me too, this is fun.
Is that we aren't talking about right now?
What is it?
There are so many more of these items that we aren't talking about right now, how many items are in this DLC?
Let's see, we got one, two, three, uh, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twelve pieces of cyberware. Uh, ranging from as cheap as fifty eddies to five hundred eddies.
Sounds fun to me.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of stuff.
Try to keep them in the a thousand or under, so everything that you see there can be part of a level one character, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, all this stuff tells you a story about the world too of cyberpunk, it's like there, these items wouldn't exist if there wasn't a need for it, you know, corporations didn't think they would make money for it. So, i- it lets you know that there's people that buy cyber pillows, they buy appetite controllers, they buy external vid screens. Because like you said, they're not edge runners, they're just regular people that are trying to enhance their quality of life with technology. While they go to their dead-end job, that sound familiar to anybody?
No.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, anyway, um, there's also plenty of fashion wear in this one.
Yeah.
Uh, so whenever, uh, sort of for this one, the joke was whenever there is a item that could have a reason that you might wanna use it as an edge runner, it would be an edge case. Uh, this is, this is the uh, this is the everything that uh, that typically you wouldn't use, but maybe. Um, it's also fun for if people are scavenging, by the way, um, cyberware off of dead people. Um, if your players are doing that, say, that's great, but these feet that's got on there, they put on the perfect fit cyberfoot. Um, so yeah, yeah, you change your shoe size now, um, or you can go out and buy new cyber feet.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, just think about it, like, let's say you're investigating a corpse and as you're going through the corpse, you find out they have a cyber pillow. So you, what does that tell you about that person? You know what I mean? If they had a bed with a pillow and sheets, they wouldn't have a cyber arm, cyber pillow, right?
I'd all.
Yeah, I mean, different strokes for different folks, but li- likely they wouldn't, right? So you're thinking this is probably a vagrant or somebody that, that goes from place to place and doesn't always have somewhere that they can sleep, so that's why they picked up this cheap piece of cyberware. Uh, to try to, you know, increase their quality of life.
I see.
Yeah.
Makes sense. I like to think of it this way, if you had four arms, how many cyber pillows could you put in your entire body?
Oh man, you're just a cyber pillow machine.
He's got four arms, brrr, brrr.
Max stack, max stack drops down from AV fours, they're like, we got a cyber psycho, he's got four arms. He's, he's turning into pillows. Oh man, that's great.
It's a great way to, great, through with your GM, I, where am I gonna put it? I have all these cyber pillows.
Yeah, it's, it's fun, like I said, there's a lot of narrative aspects to it. Um, and there's a lot of tools for game masters to use this, and like you said earlier, you know, this is as, as fun, uh, or as grim dark as cyberpunk can be, which is what we got from Upload, right? Upload is, is what the bad guys feel like in cyberpunk, you know? Uh, there, there are these goofy aspects to cyberpunk that gives it this other charm. Where it's this juxtaposition, you're seeing people dying and starving in the streets, but you're also seeing cyber pillows. And new tongues and, and appetite controllers and weird stuff like that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, um, everybody's trying to sell you an answer to a problem that's not the problem that you have.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're, you're distracted from the real things that are happening around you because you have your external vid screen and hollow palm stuff, you know what I mean?
Hollow palm was uh, was actually shown in the core book, but um, it didn't get in. Um, but there's a, I believe there's a woman um, with a, a hollow palm. Uh, just projecting a, an image of some uh, nice drugs that she wants to sell you.
That's right, oh wait, that's from uh, is that a nod to Wildside?
Well, if it was, it wasn't for me, oh gosh, there she goes. Aw, man. Big ups. Big ups.
Yeah, I remember her, cuz she looks, I mean, look at this scene, this, this is the fixer uh, source book for, for twenty twenty. I mean, doesn't this look like the shadiest scene you've ever seen?
Is she wearing a hat sideways?
Is she? Uh, no, it's just her hair in the darkness.
I love, I love those old books.
Such a good book, man, this is such a good book, this is like one of my top favorite twenty twenty books.
Think we can get away with that kinda art today?
I hope so, cuz it's good stuff, man.
All pastel graphic eighties art on the front.
I mean, I love it, I, I think we're old, to be honest with you, I think kids nowadays are not into it, uh, we're just nostalgic. But I love that aesthetic, man, I love it.
I, I want you to do some, that's gonna involve a small amount of editing.
Okay.
Can you show people, we've, we've shown people the um, the cover, right?
Mm-hmm.
For um, Tales of the Red.
Very Akira-esque.
Ah, it's so pretty, I think that is like these days, cool stuff like that. Um, anyway, I'm, I'm very excited. We're, we're all getting back to the swing of things and uh, you know, getting ready for Gen Con twenty years, it's convention, it's convention season, so. We're.
Yeah, um, I don't have a booth number on hand, but if you guys go to Twitter, the official name on Twitter for Artal Sorion says exactly what booth they're gonna be at, so if you guys wanna stop by, say hi to Jay and James and uh, the whole crew over there.
We also, we're gonna have a room, um, just a room dedicated to playing our games. Um, so, I'll be in there, um, the booth is uh, of course, you know, Gen Con's madhouse, so.
Yeah, extra brownie points if you tell James that you're a fan of Night City Council. May, I want you guys to go out there, counsel people, counsel hurt people, persons. So yeah, that's about it, uh, alright, James, anything else that you wanna cover? I'm sorry, guys, that we couldn't answer any questions, uh, we're limited on time. But we will make sure that we are on time for the next one, right, James? We're gonna make sure that we get there.
For sure, for sure, I think we should, let's leave with some questions next time.
Yeah, next time, well, well, we might make it like a question only episode, where we just, you know, bang out a bunch of questions.
I would love answering less rules clarification and more like philosophical, how do you gain?
Yeah.
Things, we can get really, you know, really uh, philosophy oriented next time, that'll be fun.
There's some good ones, like I had a comment in my YouTube channel, somebody saying, hey, my good, my players are going around doing human perception on everything, the doorknob, the guy, the even if they're, the NPCs not even interacting, they're just using it to gain as much knowledge as they can, what can I do? Help me. So that's one of those questions I, I think both of us would love to answer, right?
I think, I think I'd start playing with that, if they wanna keep doing that, then work the information you would have given. They've just told you, hey, I like human perception and I like the steps you get, all you get for it. So work that in normal conversation, instead of saying, hey, it's a bouncer, say, hey, it's a bouncer, he keeps looking at his phone. Um, he doesn't really seem like he wants to be there, you know? Uh, he uh, you know, something, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, if, I, I, my advice, and now that, now we're like actually answering the question. My advice was like, uh, there, people are in like a neutral state when you're not interacting with them, you know? You can't just walk up to someone and just start persuading them, they're automatically gonna be like turned off, it's like heavy negative modifiers to your persuasion. Because it's like, whoa, you just came up to me on the street and now you're like trying to get something out of me. So, trying to gauge like, you know, whether someone's lying or telling the truth or what their intentions are is extremely difficult without actually having a conversation with them, you know?
I would say if they're human perceiving without doing anything, what are they trying to do? You know what I mean? Ask them the que- hey, what are you trying to figure out about this person? If they say they're bearing and general affect, um, then say, uh, he's having a bad day, he's having a good day.
Yeah, neutral, a neutral thing, you know?
If, if, but, there, if they're trying to get, I wanna know this specific information, I would say, well, you can't really determine that from human perception.
No, you know, you need a conversation role, that's what I usually do.
Exactly, if you wanna get info, pick out of them, you're probably gonna have to use one of the other tools. Um, anyway, that's the answer to that one, ah, we did answer a question, I gotta go, man.
We somehow did, I know, alright, James, thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, we really appreciate all your help. Johnjohnthewise@gmail.com, that's where you guys can send me your questions, artalsorin games dot com, DLCs, that's where you can find them. And all kinds of other information, make sure you guys follow Artal Sorion Games on all social media platforms. So you are up to date on any releases or any other stuff that's coming out, they're really good about uh, putting that out there. Also join the Discord community, ours uh, and the official Artal Sorion one. Um, you could find it through ours in the affiliate links if you're looking for it. Um, that's, there, there are always, the announcements go through there and other social media, so you're always gonna be in the know. Other than that, James, anything you wanna say?
No, thanks for uh, No, thanks for um, it's nice to do this again. See you next week.
I miss you, man. Alright.
Next month.
City count, next, yeah, next time.
Bye.
Yeah, next time that we do it. Alright, the council is in, council is adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. We'll see you on the next one. Take care. Bye.